What is this from?
It's not on your.
This has been my work.
Do I have it?
Yeah, it's from tonight, for sport tonight.
And sent my office.
Well, isn't that part of the?
I can really get over the.
Bring fuzzy socks.
Here's the board draft.
Come on in, grab a seat.
Grab a seat. That's on the first page, that's on the first page.
Yeah.
I guess I didn't see him anywhere.
I haven't. It wasn't in the college.
It should be offline, shouldn't it? They have to.
They're split out.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, they're split out. And I'm a little bit confused by that.
I needed it.
That has to be switched because it's never been split up.
I've never seen it.
It's never been.
And I couldn't find it.
But when you, we'll talk to Eric about it. Because we haven't done it that way before. So, we should be able to just go with the bills as of the total that are on yours.
Right, and that's on right here.
Yeah, and that's what we'll go with. So, we won't take Amy, we won't, we won't break them down into this.
I'll just, don't need that.
Yeah.
Does that be a change in the agenda?
Maybe put an all their name as, these are.
But we approved it for, we approved it under the total.
Okay.
Then we don't have to even mess with it, but we've got to get.
You didn't have that letter that you wanted to give me?
Oh yeah, I wanted.
Joe, you see that game yesterday?
David didn't get one. He just got one.
Yeah, I mean, it was 10:07.
No, it's actually a really, it's a really nice letter.
I need one.
Janine, make one more here.
Yeah.
You want to make a copy?
It's more of a just a FYI.
FYI, so if you guys want to each take one. And then Ronnie, he's going to make a copy, so you can have it. This is a correspondence from somebody about the referendum. And so, he just wanted everybody to have a copy.
Do we ever have a more comment section on here anymore?
At the bottom. Like 10. Any comments, things before the meeting is adjourned, that's at the bottom. Okay, and then Ronnie.
Do you remember who wasn't here last time? So, there's a copy for you.
And Raleigh. Raleigh wasn't here, I guess.
There's your copy.
But I have my copy.
No, that was from last time, when you missed that. It was at a baseball game.
Oh, okay. And I'm missing one tonight.
Missing the yesterday, where are they made?
I'll miss the second one, here.
Oh.
I'll miss the first one tonight, but I'm going to miss the second. We already had five, not in the first. I just pelican. Yeah, I'm moving a little bit, kind of going back and forth.
It's actually good. I'm confused.
It's actually good.
For Eric and not Jerry.
Ronnie or Raleigh? Raleigh, it's actually good.
I didn't think it was too fast, so I.
It's like it kind of, it was with him, came back.
Right?
It came back.
You should read the poems he wrote for me after my boys were born. When Clay and Titus were born, Lauren wrote poems for me.
Oh.
After they were born, yeah.
You can do doubts for everything.
Yeah, well, he wrote one for our wedding, too. Small town, I know. It's like.
He wrote one for my funeral.
This is a good thing.
Should just have some background music. We can all do like the electric slide here for warmup.
And don't tell us what it was saying.
Did we all get new timesheets? Is that an extra one there, Raleigh?
It should have been in the packet.
Your name is on that, oh, that's June. I didn't get a packet.
Yeah, this is June.
I printed this off. There's an extra one.
And we didn't have a packet.
I don't really need anything, I just need a time thing. No, I got everything.
She needs to find.
Because I printed that off myself.
Oh, yeah.
That's it.
Oh, and then remember, you were given like a dead letter.
Yes, I did. Anybody else need one of the sheets?
And then don't forget to.
Since I made a 15 copies, I always have.
Don't forget to do retreats. Oh, yeah, and I got to do.
You want June's?
Heart stuff.
Sometimes, course is the issue.
Yeah, keep moving, I like heart stuff. Hit or none.
I didn't put mileage.
Yeah. Usually there's like many future.
I didn't put any mileage on it, I don't have any idea what it was.
150 for going down. Thank you, Bonnie.
Okay.
Mine was 77 from home, and then doubled.
That's mileage.
Eight. That's 15 today.
I had it under per diem, Raleigh. I had it under the per diem.
Okay.
That's for discussion.
All right, it is 6 o'clock. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. There were no public comments.
Nope.
Here. We will move on to the board committee reports. I just want to say that we had a meet and confer, which is right beforehand. Tony was the only one from that committee that was able to come tonight. This was the first time that we actually had admin, admin and confer, which in my opinion was very helpful, because when an issue was brought up, they were there to, to say, okay, this is how it was. And then, so Tony has way more information to bring back to his people. And I, and I thought it went really, really well. Had a lot of good discussion. And have some things that are being added to site leadership team meetings, and back to school things, too. So, it went well.
Good.
That was the only committee that I had. Anybody else?
We had policy last Monday night, and we went over, they're all listed in the packet.
Yep.
The only ones that had changes to them, I'm not going to read them all off, but we had 419. And basically, the changes were recommended by the MSBA, and it's either changing the wording, like tobacco-free environment, changes cigarette to a delivery device. So, it's just changing the mode of how that's, how the child uses it, or whatever. And then, otherwise, if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask. A lot of things were just changing how things were worded, as far as no child left behind, as every student succeeds now. And then, the only other change for tuition fees on policy 509.1 was out-of-state 7 through 12 is $7,007.25. Otherwise, nothing else had changed. And then, the only other thing that came out of that was policy 509.2, we talked about it, and we decided not to make any changes at this time. So, if anybody has any questions, wants to comment, or has concerns about that, feel free either tonight, or before the next, or the second reading, so.
And all of you should have received.
Yep.
A folder from me. I thought it should be easier to see if I put it in folders like that. So, you will notice in that folder, any of those with, like Amy said, that came from MSBA, those are in red line.
Red line, yeah.
And 503, 506, both of them have changes, even updated as of this morning, based on admin meetings. So, there's some recommendations. And we talked about this morning that it would be nice to get a policy meeting next week, just so that we can, because there are quite a few changes that we're looking at with 503 and 506, based on those admin recommendations, and some of the things you heard tonight, which should streamline some of this, these issues with attendance. So, when we get done with the meeting tonight, and the work session, we just have to see if we can come up with a meeting date next week to get policy, and then we'll have some of the principles there, so we can have a really good discussion about those two policies.
Should we want to go and use those tonight? Do the first reading approval on them tonight, and second time around? Because we need to get it wrapped up.
Exactly, exactly. We still want the first reading approved, because if we don't get that first reading done tonight, we can't have the final policy done in time for the handbooks.
So, there was an activities council meeting. I wasn't able to be in attendance, I wasn't aware of the meeting date, but I asked Joe to send me some topics that they discussed. So, I'll just, Joe's here, so he can intervene when necessary. But they talked about the weight room. Evidently, it was mentioned that some of this coaching staff would like to maybe have the possibility of a strength and conditioning coach, not really in your wheelhouse right now. Correct, Joe? Policy changes, that's the policy, I don't remember the exact number, but the Minnesota High School League events, must, the gate must be run through us for anytime they're doing those tournaments, like volleyball, basketball, all that kind of stuff. Yeah. Then they talked about the referendum update. Concern was brought up about losing volleyball courts, but we don't have the specs yet on the new gym. This one I was really sad about is the booster club is no longer in existence. So, that's kind of a sad deal.
Ah.
They did so many wonderful things for our kids and our community, so it's unfortunate that that's no longer. So, I think at this time, I think I'd mentioned the last board meeting, we have so many different clubs, like after the referendum this winter, it'd be nice to bring everybody in and ask them what their purpose is. And, you know, a lot of these are athletic-based, like what do you do about the students that are not in athletics? How do you fundraise for them? And, you know, maybe now it's at the time to go through community and look at that corporate sponsorship, and maybe have discussions about that this winter.
Branding of it.
Yep, and branding, and all that kind of stuff. So, I think that's a discussion to have this winter, we have so much going on right now. But, you know, if you see a booster club member, the five of them that were doing it, just please thank them for their time and efforts, because they did a, Gail did it for many, many, many years, so. And then surveys, they talked about surveys. We're already doing more than is necessary set forth by the Minnesota High School League. So, anything I missed, Joe? No?
No, I put a little more pizzazz in it when we talked about it.
Yeah. Sorry.
Here's a sticker for everyone.
Yeah. So, that's, if you guys, I can always forward you guys the email. He had much more in-depth, but I just kind of gave the version, quick version. So, that was it for that one.
All right, we'll move on to the 6.2, the superintendent report.
Going to do most of it at the work session. The only thing updates-wise, we're working on a couple of meetings. Once we get through the work session tonight, and in advance of the meeting on the 29th, there are two meeting dates that I saw Lee sent out. One is on Thursday, I think, Jason, did you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think one's on Thursday, and one's next week.
Thursday, and then I think the Thursday.
Yeah, and basically, what we have to do is sit down and prepare everything for review and comment. There's a full listing of everything. So, I sent off, back off to these guys, here's the stuff that we did in 2015, because there's demographic information, all that. So, those things are coming up. But basically, everything that's been going on the past couple of weeks since the last meeting has been everything about referendum, so.
Okay.
Not going to bore you with that stuff now, when we get the work session.
You're just going to bore us later?
No, I'm going to give you financial.
Well, you just said you weren't going to bore us now, so, okay.
Longer.
Okay, we will move on to 7.1. This is the approval of the June 24 regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to the consent agenda. We are looking for a total amount.
Total amount is $779,487.41.
Okay, so Amy, you taking note of that as a total? Okay. We will move on to 9.1. This is a certified contract for Kip Fosler.
Are we going to vote on that?
I'm sorry, yes, we are. Thank you. All those, I need a motion. Are you making that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. And then Raleigh, are you seconding that?
Sure, yes.
Any discussion? Thanks for keeping me on my toes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Now, we're going to move on to 9.1. This is a certified contract for Kip Fosler.
Bless his heart.
Yes, yes. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Raleigh and Ronnie.
Raleigh, Raleigh and Ronnie. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.2, this is the 1920 fees. There's a fee schedule in your packet.
This does not have to be done tonight.
Okay.
So, if you want to look at it for now, in case you want to table it, I sent out the last survey that we had regionally. I was telling Lindsay earlier, I just received an email today at about 1 o'clock from Jeremy Kovash, that they're asking us to give the new numbers. So, by the end of the week, or by early next week, I should have all the new numbers on student activity fees for the whole region again.
Okay.
So that we could have it much more updated. What we do know on the activity fees is we've increased, in fiscal 11, we were at 30 for middle school, 50 for high school. And then, from fiscal 12 through fiscal 16, we were at 35 and 55. So, it sat at, you know, 35 bucks there for a while. And now, from fiscal 17 through this last year, we've been at 40 for middle school, high school's been 60, and you can see where that family cap is. You also, from that regional survey, know what kind of numbers we're at in comparison. And we're probably on the low, lower end, so.
Can you just explain, Chip, for David and Laura, where was, what those fees offset?
So, I think you all, all know that extracurricular does not pay for itself. This is basically to help offset some of those costs. There's, there's no, we don't go into it to try to have a break even with extracurriculars. So, this is basically to help offset some of those costs. But somehow, it goes back into the general fund. It's all unreserved funds, it goes right back into that. If at any point in time you want to see, I mean, just think of it this way, the only income that we have for extracurricular is gate and these fees. And then compare that to the salaries, equipment, and everything. You don't go into this with the idea that you're going to break even. It's that, that enhancement that you have for your offerings at, at the K-12 level to be able to offer these type of programs for kids, for enrichment, so.
Brian, you know, I know some schools just had on the listing, they had reduced rates for kids that were on.
Free and reduced?
Free and reduced. Do we have those?
And Joe, do you want to explain?
Yes, we do. So, we've got a waiver process, so kids that are identified on the free and reduced, usually we credit in half, those that are on strictly free, we do that. All we ask is that, we don't actively go and seek and look, whatever, to say, if there's an issue when we talk to the parents of the students, contact me, we will help. And so, those ones that need it, they just, they contact, and we usually have them sign a thing.
Okay. I just, I saw it on some people's schedules, and I didn't see it on ours. There's probably a process or something.
And what's nice about that is, it may be a hardship situation where they haven't filled out that paperwork, but something, somebody's lost a job, or what else not. And, okay, we're going to work with them on it.
I wish we didn't have to do all those $200 books of coupons for every sport. Seems like, Sandy, you mentioned that before.
You talking, the fundraisers and all that? You know, and again, that goes back to, look what's happened over time. It's gone from having a centralized booster set up to where it's got individual sports more. And that is our post-referendum discussion.
Yeah, I think, yeah, definitely. I just want to point out, being on the wellness committee, we have the snack program staying at $40 that we did discuss last, or this past winter, about putting a family cap of $100 on that. And I would ask for the board to still consider that, as I told the wellness committee that we had had a discussion, we felt that was fair to have a family cap on that. So, you basically, you're paying for your first two and half price on your third child.
We have an administrative meeting tomorrow. And I, what I would like to do is get some recommendations, like with the teacher subs and what else not, from that meeting. And then I, that way I could fill that in on this, so that we have a shared document with some recommendations that would be coming. Because, again, we know the, we know the problem with trying to find teacher subs. It is a constant battle.
Is that competitive?
And we need to be.
17 is competitive?
Well, the 115 a day.
Got it.
Is, we're probably near, but in the FM area, we have to really be competitive to go against West Fargo, Fargo, and Moriah. So, most likely, I'm going to be recommending tomorrow that, that we up that. Again, you know, we may have to keep updating, upping it five bucks every, every year, to truly be able to stay competitive in the FM market. Because we don't want to be short of having teachers. It doesn't work well.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to table the fee schedule.
I'd like to throw this out here, too, and maybe, I don't know how Joe feels about this and stuff like that, but as far as like an individual cap of $180, I guess, I mean, there's two sides to the whole discussion, but if a child decides to be in like four or five activities, then that's kind of their choice, you know, unless they're, but if we've identified a hardship, do you think that would discourage kids if we had raised that cap, individual cap, from going out for all of those things? I mean, I don't want to do that to them, I don't want to raise it to the point of where it would discourage kids, but, because I feel like sports and extracurriculars keep people accountable, I mean, you have to have a certain grade point, you got to.
We hit the family cap a lot more than we hit the individual cap. I think the family cap comes into play a lot more when you've got multiple.
So, maybe considering, I would like to continue the discussion of raising one or both of those.
I, you know, I sat on the transportation negotiations, and we did take a big hit on trying to be competitive for those extracurricular bus routes, because they're sitting.
Yep.
And we talked at that time that maybe we need to evaluate our activity fees for our students, when you look at some of the neighboring districts, we are on the lower end.
For cheap.
Yeah, so it would be, I think it would be well worth the discussion to look at increasing those individual season.
Fees.
Fees, and as well as the cap on the, on the family.
And I fully expect you to have that, that new regional data by early next week.
Okay.
So, we'll table it for Jay.
We have table of for Dave.
So, there's a motion to table, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Ronnie.
Who ta, who motion?
I did, and Ronnie.
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Where are we at here? 9.3, this is the legal firm of Kevin Rupp, Anderson, Squires, Waldsberg, looking for a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura.
This is our current one?
Yep, that's, yeah, that's still.
And Kevin Rupp used to be with Ratwick.
Rose.
And, yeah.
Yep.
So, he's, that firm's still going, too, but he's.
Yep, and a couple of those are, have been bought out. And so, Kevin, and Squires, and Anderson, all left Ratwick.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. 9.4, the investment firm, Albert Ayer and Company.
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. This is 9.5, this is the policies. Again, there's a couple policies that Amy had pointed out, that this, there's going to be a little bit of different verbiage change on 503 and 506, is that correct?
Actually, the ones MSBA gave, brought forward were 419, 506, 509.1, 515, 515 form, and then 520 student surveys form. And student surveys form, I think was giving the option to opt out, was that correct?
Yeah, they updated some of those, yep. And so, every one of those that were MSBA changes are in that folder. Otherwise, the rest of them, the reason that you're approving all of these, every one of these policies are required for the student handbooks.
Right, and on 503 and 506, those are the ones we're going to.
You're going to see.
Catch up.
Purple, yep. And so, you'll see actually three, because you're going to see highlighted in red, which means it's the 2017 version from MSBA. And then, the 2018 or 19 version is in just regular red. And then, from the administrative is in purple. So, 506, you're going to see lots of that.
Okay, so looking for a motion to approve the first reading.
So moved.
Motion by David. Is there a second?
Second.
Lindsay?
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.6, this is a certified contract for Brittany Deutsch. I believe that's how you say her name. Looking for a motion to approve her contract.
So moved.
Ooh, David.
Okay, David and Amy, are you second here?
Sure.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. 9.7, this is the non-certified contract for Susan Borgensen. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. The board work session is right after this, well, it'll take about five minutes break.
Yes.
10.2, operations committee, the next meeting is here, remember? Still at this site, not Glendon. 5 o'clock.
But we have talked about moving operations to be after board meetings, potentially.
Okay.
So. Because really, there isn't, there isn't that much new, that they're still working on getting quotes on the trailer. We purchased everything else. So, I think that's one of those that we may even end up, well, we need to have it, we'll have to make a decision, but I'd rather at least schedule it to be after the meeting.
Those of you on operations, fine with that?
Sure.
Yep, okay.
Would you rather have it after?
Do you want it after, or you don't want it around?
It's going to be a quick meeting anyway, right?
I'm good, I'm easy today. Today, just today.
Okay, so it will be, the board meeting is at 6, followed by the operations committee. And then, don't forget that policy is looking at trying to meet next week.